Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to the Braintree Town Council for Tuesday, September 17, 2024. Could you please all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And you can please remain standing, and we're going to have a moment of silence for our men and women in uniform, please. Thank you, please be seated. Can we please have the roll call?
Counselor Barrick?
Here.
Counselor Flaherty?
Here.
Counselor Hume?
Here.
Counselor Maglio?
Here.
Counselor Moran?
Here.
Counselor Quilty will not be attending this evening. Counselor Reynolds?
Here.
Counselor Ringus?
Yeah.
Counselor Ryan?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, our first item on the agenda is we're very honored tonight to have the Massachusetts Tournament of Champions for the spring sixth grade girls' competition. Want to say congratulations to all you young ladies. We're very happy that we could have the champions here with us tonight. And so what I'd first like to do, I'd like to turn it over to Counselor Ringus, so he could say a few words, because he's the one that invited you here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, girls. Congratulations. This is a huge honor, so we're happy to have you here. For those who are watching at home, or for the fellow counselors, this is a huge deal. So these girls are the Grade 6.1 MTOC Champions. So first off, they had to try out to make the team. So they made the best team in G6. Then from there, they had to play in the South Shore League. And the South Shore League is one of the tougher divisions there is in Massachusetts. We have the Bridgewater's, and the Eastons, and the Sharon's, and the Waymans, who always put out good soccer programs. So they had to win their regular season, get into the playoffs. Playoffs, as any coach or player knows, a ball can bounce the wrong way, you can get an errant penalty, and that can change the whole season. But they got through that, and then they went off to MTOC, where the division champions of every single travel league in Massachusetts come together and play in one big tournament at the end of June. And these guys, they showed up, they played hard, and they ended up taking home the state championship for G6.1, which is a huge honor. So congratulations again, girls. So to talk a little bit more about what they did, and I know he loves giving speeches, we're going to call Coach Ken Taylor up and Coach Kevin Walsh.
They certainly listened to me quite a bit this season, so again, thank you for giving me another chance to, you know, maybe yell at them or scream out onto the field. So thank you. You know, you gave a highlight to what it takes to kind of get there, but these girls in front of you today, many of them I've coached since kindergarten, or even, you know, out on a field and practice with older siblings, they've been playing together since third grade. They have grown more than I can ever imagine. In the playoffs, it was a pretty tough game to start with, and I guess I'll tell a little story about that. By the way, they told me to cut this short, and so... They did, they told me to cut it short. So the way this all played out, you mentioned Bridgewater is probably one of the biggest, you know, juggernauts of the area, right? And so we were down 1-0, probably about 10 minutes left in the game, and pretty shocking thing happened, my daughter actually went down. So my daughter's also on the team. So your daughter goes down, and she's wailing out on the field, and sorry, Bronwyn, for talking about this, but it's important to the story. And so I go out on the field, and I, we had just seen a girl go off the field with an ambulance, and I looked at Bronwyn, I'm like, "Look, you have to get off this field. There's 10 minutes left, and either you need to get up and get off, or the ambulance is going to come and get you." To which he kind of was like, "Kind of, no, the ambulance is not coming to get me." So I got off, carried her off the field, went down and onto the sideline and sat down, and within probably a minute of me sitting and not watching the game, they scored. We scored. I think specifically you may have scored, or it was one of you two. So we scored, and so I missed that goal, and then a few minutes later, the EMT showed up, and then I missed the second goal. So I pretty much missed our championship for the first one. So fortunately enough, we got a chance to do it again. So that's really a testament to their teamwork together, playing together, that somebody goes down, they step up, everybody steps up, and they delivered. And they ended up beating Bridgewater in that game, and just again, to attest to that, Bridgewater took the 10th grade division, the 8th grade division, and we took over the 6th grade division. So it was pretty awesome. Onto MTOC. So MTOC, as you mentioned, tournament, 10 leagues, I forget the number of players that are out there, but it's pretty significant. We show up, and guess who we get is Hanover. And for those of us that know, you know, the Hanover rivalry, we play them quite a bit in indoor, and, you know, a lot of the girls here. And so we ended up taking them out. We played a game against Littleton, we beat them 5-1. We played Andover, which was an extremely tough team in a big program like Bridgewater, we beat them 2-1, which leads us to the semifinals against Pembroke. And Pembroke, we went into overtime and ended up beating them 2-1. And for those parents that were there, right, you can kind of see every play, and every movement, and every time the ball was touched, the girls came together more and more. And it's, towards the end, it was on cruise control. Like, we didn't have any coaching to do. They knew exactly what they were doing, they were backing each other up, they played as a team better than I've ever seen any team come together. And in the final game, they were so amped up that we ended up crushing that team 4-0. So postseason, 7-0, through the season, we scored over 40 goals. We have an amazing group of girls, it was a great run. Thank you so much for being, you know, part of the team and being, letting me coach you. Again, it was absolutely fantastic. I would go into each one of you, but again, they told me to cut my time down, and we did that before, and I'm sure nobody wants to hear me talk again for that much, but it really is impressive. Like, we should be proud of what Braintree is doing with our youth programs, and what it's done for, and what these ladies here represent for our future soccer here in Braintree. So I think, I think I got everything. You got everything? I got it all. So Kev, you sure you don't want to say anything? Because I reserved a few minutes for you. I think Maeve, did you want to say? No, all right. A minute ago, you did. So again, thank you very much for having me, and having all of us here, and thank you.
Thank you.
The counselors like to say anything? Counselor Hume?
Do you want to go first? Go ahead.
Sure. All right, thank you.
Sorry.
I just want to just kind of piggyback on that. So thank you to Coach Ken Taylor and I, Coach Walsh. Something to keep in mind is these coaches put a lot of their time in, and this is not a paid thing. So this is time away from family, time away from work, and it's a huge commitment on their part, and obviously, you saw through Ken's enthusiasm, how much he enjoys this and how much he brings to the table. So that's a huge part of you guys coming together as a team as well. And I'm sure the coaches want to thank the parents as well. The parents have to make sure they show up for practices, they have to get them out to Lancaster for MTOC. Did you guys stay over? Probably, you didn't stay over, came back?
We discussed it, and my assistant coach, you know, says he straight, and said we came to win, not for vacation, so...
I love that. So you had to drive back and forth to Lancaster twice, so, you know, the parents have a commitment as well, and it obviously, it shows on the field, and these girls are lucky to have their coaches and lucky to have their parents. So again, congratulations to everyone, because it's a win for all of you.
Thank you. Counselor Hume?
Mr. President, thank you Counsel Ringus too, for bringing this fabulous team to the council. This is one of the fun things we get to do. So, and congratulations to all of you. It is no easy task, and sixth grade to accomplish all the things you have accomplished is truly incredible. I'm sure we're going to be seeing you in the future, because as your coach stated, your teamwork and all that, and when it was just effortless, you're only in sixth grade, it's only going to get better. So I'm looking forward to seeing you in the future. As Counsel Ringus said, coaches do volunteer. Your parents get you there, because you're not a driving age and all that, so they give up their time, maybe time off of work, all that, parents getting you there. So thank you to all the parents, because that's a commitment too. But so proud of all of you, you're the future of Braintree. Keep it up, work hard, and study hard too, so you can continue to play your sports. Congratulations.
Thank you. Any other counselors that say anything? Counselor Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, I think Counselor Hume really hit it on the head when she talks about you should be very proud of yourselves, what you've done. You're going to look back on these memories and have, you're going to cherish them as you get older. I suggest to you to use this experience to help you whatever kind of challenges that you guys find yourself in as you move ahead. What you've done is with this effort and focus, you've proven to yourself, to your parents, to your coaches, that you can accomplish anything that you put your mind to, and doing together as a team is just the greatest experience. So congratulations to you, the team, to the parents, and to the coaches. Fantastic, and I'm looking forward also to hearing about this team and you as individuals when you get older, into high school and beyond.
Thank you, Counsel Reynolds. Counselor Moran, why don't you go? Go ahead.
I wanted to, I just wanted to congratulate the coaches and the parents of these kids, and the kids as well, but coaches, you know, I coached my kids. You put in so much time, the rewards aren't, you know, are just in the memories and getting to spend time with your kids, and there's nothing better than seeing your kids succeed and enjoy themselves and have fun. So congratulations on that, and thank you. Anybody who's willing to coach these days, it's hard in youth sports to find people to volunteer to be coaches, so thank you to the, to the coaches out there that are willing to put in the time. I had one, I had one son that made it out to MTOC for the high school division, and just getting there is incredible, just getting there. But to win it all is phenomenal. You guys are unbelievable. So congratulations, and I hope you all go to Braintree High.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty.
I just, I would like to congratulate all of you for the experience that you've been through, and I just wanted to point out some things that I noticed about what you had to do, from what your coach says. First of all, you had to try out, which was brave, because that means that you tried out for a team that you didn't know what was going to happen. And some girls, some kids don't do that. So there you are, you're already ahead of the game, because you just showed up to try out. And then you put in the work at practice to do the drills, and put in the work to create the foundation to make you athletically great. And I know that that wasn't always the most fun thing, but that's, that repetition over and over and over again is what makes it automatic when you're on the field later on, and you did that hard work. And then you faced the odds against tough teams, and you kept it together when the pressure was on, and you succeeded. So now you're here, in these chairs as champions, and you deserve to be congratulated for that. But all your life, all your life, you're going to be called upon to be brave, and to work hard, and to hold it together when the pressure is on, and believe in what you can do. So you're off to a great start for that, and I congratulate you.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty.
I'd just like to say congratulations to all of you young ladies. Braintree has a tremendous tradition in girls' soccer. We've had champions before you, and it's so, it's wonderful that you're carrying on the tradition and working so hard. You know, I know if you're at, in the, in the, the mass tournament of champions, you know, you're playing against the best soccer players, and you rose to the occasion, and you worked really hard, and just, you know, you got to remember that when you work hard, you can, you can come out on top. And so you worked very hard, and you're the champions, and congratulations, and you made Braintree very, very proud, and you got to think that you can apply that to anything in life, and you can, if you try hard and you work hard, you can succeed in life. So we're very proud of you young ladies, thank you so much, and congratulations. So we're here to say thank you tonight, so let's have another round of applause for these young ladies.
So what we're going to do is, all the counselors are going to come out in front here, we're going to hand out some recognitions to the coaches and the players that we have, and then after that, we're going to come up and take pictures right in front of the stage, so all the parents that want to take pictures will take pictures with the counselors and the players, and then we'll probably take a little five-minute recess, so we can get a little order back and go back to the meeting, all right? So we're going to come up right now, all righty?
All right, so when you come up, Counselor Hume will hand you a certificate, and all the counselors will shake your hands, and you can head over that direction. So we'll start with Annabelle Conley. Oh, good call, good call, good call. Abigail Kearns. Amelia Pellegrino. Eva Wagner. Bronwyn Taylor. Brooke Petrelli. Grace Antonovich. Kylie Walsh. Well, Kylie, congratulations. Leighton Stewart. Madeline Feldpoch. Maeve Donovan. Samantha English. Savannah Sanon. Coach Kevin Walsh. And Coach Ken Taylor. And we'll have all the girls gather in front of the stage, the counselors, the mayor will jump in and take some pictures.
Can we have, can we have a five-minute recess? Motion?
Motion for a five-minute recess?
Second, on favor, aye, five-minute recess.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to reconvene the town council meeting, so that was our first announcement, and I'm going to ask any other counselors if they have announcements. Counsel Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to bring the attention that this coming Friday, guests are invited to attend the Braintree High School football game, where we'll have a special ceremony to honor POWs and MIAs on the National Day of Recognition, which is 9/20. People are familiar, this is a ceremony that, that was traditionally held prior to the Thanksgiving Day football game. It was brought to the attention of the town that, by former counselor Dan Clifford, who has just recently passed away, about moving this ceremony from the Thanksgiving date to coincide with the national date, which again, will be this Friday at 5:30, at the Alumni Stadium prior to the high school varsity football game against North Quincy High School. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Are there any other announcements? Counsel Hume?
Mr. President, I just want to announce the Fourth Annual Nelson Chin Memorial Golf Tournament. As many of you know, Nelson Chin was the Parks and Recreation Director for the town of Braintree, where he served in that role for many years. He passed away during COVID, and we've had a memorial tournament for him for four years. We are sold out for golfers, but they are looking for sponsorships and donations and whatever, so you can reach out to thenelsonchinmemorialfund@gmail.com if you have any questions or would like to... like to support the event. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Councilor Erika?
Thank you very much, President Ryan. We have a lot going on this coming weekend in town, in, on Sunday in particular, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., there's going to be two, two events in close proximity. The Chinese-American Association of Braintree, and I'm pointing behind me, because they'll be hosting the Mid-Autumn Festival right behind us here on French's Common, again, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. And, oh, I'm sorry, the, the Chinese-American Association is noon to 4:00, forgive me. And the Heritage Days, sponsored by the Braintree Historical Society, will also be on Sunday, right across the street at the Fairhouse, where the Historical Society has one of their, their buildings. So it's going to be a fun-filled afternoon. The weather's still looking great, so I hope everyone will be able to come out and join us for celebrating our town's history and culture. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Erika. Councilor Flaherty?
Thank you. I would just like to announce that this Wednesday, September 25th, will be the Seventh Annual Community Heroes Awards. It'll be held right here in Cahill Auditorium. The Community Heroes Awards are put forward each year by the Braintree Community Partnership to recognize people who have made substantial contributions locally to preventing youth drug and alcohol use and helping to prevent and treat substance abuse disorders and bring awareness about the impact of those issues in our community. So there are, every year, kind of a, a group of people that we honor for, for their work in this area. It's a wonderful night. I highly encourage anyone who would like to join us to be there, because it's always a night full of hope and optimism. And it begins at 6:00 p.m. If you'd like to attend, please RSVP. Lenn Farano, that's L-F-A-R-A-N-O, at braintreema.gov, or you can call 7819-794-8146. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements from the councilors? Okay, we do not have any minutes to approve tonight. We do not have any old business tonight. Under new business, we have some items from the town clerk. The first one is 24046, Town Clerk, Call of the State General Election, November 5th, 2024, or take up any action relative thereto. So we were thinking of doing same-night action on this. Is there any counselor who objects to same-night action on order 24046? Hearing none. Is there a motion on this matter?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move upon the request of the Town Clerk, the Town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, so order the Call of the State General Election, November 5th, 2024. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Town of Braintree is hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town who are qualified to vote in the State General Election on Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. to vote at the polling places in their respective precincts to cast their votes to the following purposes. To cast their votes in the State General Election for the candidates of political parties for the following offices: President and Vice President, Senator in Congress, Representative in Congress, 8th District; Counselor, 2nd and 4th District, Senator in General Court in Norfolk Employment Districts and Norfolk Bristol Employment Districts; Representative in General Court, 5th Norfolk District; Clerk of Courts, Norfolk County; Register of Deeds, Norfolk County; County Commissioners, Norfolk County, and 5 Initiative Position, Petitions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. The next item on the agenda is also from the Town Clerk. It's 24047, Town Clerk, Designation of Early Voting Site, Days and Hours, November 5th, 2024, or take up any action related thereto. We're going to look for same-night action on this as well. So is there any counselor who objects to same-night action on order 24047? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move upon the request of the Town Clerk, the Town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, so order, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Town of Braintree is hereby required to establish, under the Votes Act, an early voting site to allow any qualified voter, as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 51, to cast a ballot for any biennial state election during the early voting period. At the recommendation of the Braintree Board of Regents, the Braintree Town Council hereby designates Braintree Town Hall, Cahill Auditorium, as Braintree's early voting site. Further, early voting hours shall be held during the days and hours described below. On Saturday, October 19th to 26th, 8:30 to 1:00 p.m. From Sunday, October 20th and 27th, 8:30 to 1:00 p.m. Monday, October 21st and 28th, 8:30 to 4:30 p.m. Tuesday, October 22nd and 29th, 8:30 to 7:00 p.m. Wednesday, October 23rd and 30th, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Thursday, October 24th and 31st, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And Friday, October 25th and November 1st, 8:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. The next item, do we have a motion to refer to the, to all matters to the respective committees?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. So the next item on the agenda is, we're going to, this is under new business, we're going to be going into executive session, and it's going to be for 02024, Executive Session pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the matter of Wetzel versus the Town of Braintree et al., USDC case numbers 20CV11456IT and 22CV12126ITDMS. And the Council President declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body. So I'm going to read the mo, I'm going to read this as the motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect, respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. So do we have a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Okay, this requires, requires a roll call vote.
Councilor Erika?
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty?
Aye.
Councilor Hume?
Aye.
Councilor Maglio?
Aye.
Councilor Moran?
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, that's unanimous. So the town council will go into executive session, when the, the town council will reconvene in open session meeting to adjourn for the evening. Right? So is there a motion for a 10-minute recess, so we can go upstairs to the Johnson chambers?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. We're going to go into executive session.